Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Palatka's Commission Meeting for February 13th, 2020. We're gonna have our invocation at this time by Doron Armman, Assistant Minister of Mount Tabor First Baptist Church, our very own Superintendent Rick Searns is gonna lead us in the pledge. Everyone please stand at this time.
We all bow our heads in prayer. Father, we thank you tonight for this time together. We thank you for this great city that you allowed all of us to be citizens in. We thank you for this board of commissioners. Father, we thank you for this time and for this day that you have made. And God, we will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we take this time right now to acknowledge you for who you are. You are King of Kings and Lord of Lords. There is no one beside you. And Father, we ask you right now in Jesus's name that you would continue to do what only you can do in our city. In the name of Jesus, I pray, God, that you would bless every one of these leaders that make decisions for this city day in and day out. That you would give them supernatural wisdom, God. That you would give them understanding in their hearts. That you would give them what no man or woman can give them, Father, to be able to lead. God, there is no doubt that you have chose them for a time such as this. And Father, we place them in your hands for you to do what only you can do in our lives. We pray for unity among us. We pray for love, God, among us in Jesus's name. And Father, at the end of the day, may you get the glory and honor out of all that we say and do. We ask this in no other name but the name of Jesus we do pray. Everybody say amen.
That prayer doesn't have to be ready, I don't know what will. So again, it's always good to see our young people in here. And Mr. Armman, we definitely appreciate you, the work that you do in this community, and the fact that you've been around here working since you were a young, very, very young man. So we definitely want to recognize you and say thank you. And also to our Superintendent from pledge, this time, roll call, please.
Mayor Hill. Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present accounted for, and you have a call.
Thank you very much. Next up is approval of the minutes. We've got the minutes from January 23rd. Our workshop and our regular meeting, is there a motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second.
So motion for the second, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We've got a series of proclamations today. I'm gonna take a couple out of order, and we're gonna flip it over actually just a little bit. Since we have so many people here today, I want to make sure you guys get an opportunity to hear about Palatka's black history. And also, I want you to recognize a very special young man today. So I'm gonna take a point of privilege at this time. I'll also say thank you to the Arc League for being here. So will you guys please stand for me? So give them a round of applause. I wanna switch around just a little bit. I'm gonna go down to item D on the agenda. And first up, I'm gonna bring up item D two. Mr. Granville U. Hoppy Hopkins, Senior. U.S. Army Retired Purple Heart Recipient, three times. Bronze Medal of Valor recipient. Veteran of World War II, the Korean War, and Vietnam. I wanna ask Mr. Hoppy. See, come on up, Ron. Come on over here by me, we. So, for those of you, Mr. Hopkins is a avid fisherman. And he buys the best fish and the biggest fish in Southern California.
No, I catch them.
And so, his daughter Jennifer came across something very, very special. And we're here today to celebrate black history. And this young man, at the ripe age of...
Sixteen.
He's sixteen.
He volunteered at sixteen.
He volunteered at sixteen, he's sixteen. And he's eighty-eight today, standing here very thin, just a blessing. And often times, we don't say thank you enough to our veterans. If you have any veterans in the audience today, I know we've got some representatives from the VFW. All our veterans, please stand up at this time. And so if you guys could come up to the front of the room for me, share in this special honor. This distinction is one that we wanna make sure, we celebrate black history. We wanna make sure we recognize all you guys, standing right here. Mr. Cutright. So, this young man volunteered. He signed up at sixteen. And he got someone to forge the paperwork so he could be eighteen at the time. And has been in three wars. And we just thank him for what he's doing. He's a ranger during a time when African-American men were not rangers in the military. He's gone through the segregation of the military. And we're here celebrating Black History Month, but we're also celebrating American history. And we just wanna thank you for your services. Anything that you wanna say today? If you want to, if you don't, you don't have to. You burned the red, not to you, but before you think about it, we're gonna go ahead and give you this as well. And this is, this says Palatka Pride Hometown Hero Award, presented to Granville U. Hoppy Hopkins, Senior. In grateful recognition of your contribution to America's history and for your courageous wartime service to protect the rights and freedoms of all Americans, Palatka City Commission and Staff, February 13th, 2020. And we wanna present this to you and tell you that we love you and appreciate you.
Thank you, folks. You are the ones that I fought for. I gave my life for, my blood, in those countries that I served. I'm grateful and honored. Thank you very much.
While we're taking this picture, we got a special video that we wanna show you. This tells the story of Mr. Hopkins' service. So we got him in here, I think it's good you want to step in.
The future that I have with the IDW is like no other I can imagine.
The IDW has offered me better wages than...
It's all right.
This is not...
We are, I mean, you know it.
That's just what I said.
Cutright, get over here.
What does twelve compare means to me? It means the reality of what we all really want to become in our very core. We want to be difference makers. We want to help other people, be good people. And as journalists, we have...
Hold on, hold on.
That's not it.
I had to have him do the co-op.
No, that's not it, I just...
I'm...
It is awesome. Proud of you, brother. Ranger, looking away for reasons.
Yeah, I took a ranger training before, folks. Ranger, tell you, hoping to then develop a path via the group that I was cross-trained, special forces, Navy SEALs.
He was playing too hard.
Yep, I was young. I also graduated from Troy State University, Somacolade. I have a special degree in...
We'll put an email over here, but it wants to hear, help me.
Who's fired?
No, you said...
We're gonna wait. We're gonna wait for the fireworks and green services.
We're gonna pause for technical difficulties.
They didn't have that hobby on you before you were on duty, on active duty?
Sure, I thought that was for the first thing they had.
You could be picking right now.
They wanted them to...
In that particular time, coming first sergeant, I had a lot of responsibility, I wore all kind of hats. So being first sergeant, my specialty was never have full zero.
Do you worry?
That's what I did most of the time.
When is you...
I wanna...
That's right. There it is, we're scared. Here we go.
Get the skin of the ass.
What happened last time?
We found out very little about her eighty-nine-year-old father's past news.
Eighteen years older.
When she was a girl, she couldn't go away from the clums overseas. And this is a story that so many military families do, and can absolutely relate to. Exactly the tire number. This woman got the history tucked away in storage that she had no idea about. Her calm, mild-mannered father, who loves quiet-faced fishing, had a story that called her by surprise, hook, line, and sinker.
Boy, he put it in.
One thing about Randall Hopkins, he never gives up. Because fishing is catching the bleacher persistent. He and his cousin Red share everything when it comes to fishing, especially back to the river lake, including secret spots.
I don't know if you like that, nobody does, every person.
And while Red knew Hoppy was in the army, I'd be all the time in the army. He didn't fish for much more information.
I don't probably believe that stuff, I just, I'm a person around this military career. This is my passion, my passion for fishing. He missed, oh, no.
This is what brings him peace of mind.
His daughter Jennifer moved into their Santa Tail home to help him get retired. Maybe helped with lost time as a little girl.
His military career took him away from us quite often.
He spent more than three decades in the army, but so much more about the man as mid-term. Just below the surface.
Yep, I knew he was a career army man, but I really didn't know about him until probably about four years ago, really, just going through some of his military background.
Well, I tell them nations and accolades was ranked right there. Because I didn't do it much.
She found that her dad was actually an Army Ranger, Special Ops, a sniper, and a surgeon.
And I often asked him, are you...
Of course. His army career started at the very end of World War II Concentration Camp, Queens.
My job was at the front gate of that.
Then he jumped into Korea.
That's one of the things that I wanted to talk about.
And if that wasn't enough...
I used to jump flying, and I was not the one to survive.
He left the two in Vietnam.
With death on top of death, but we had to take this area.
That's where he earned one of his three Purple Hearts.
And I looked down at my legs and just streaming with blood. I was covered from here down. AK-47 had drawn me.
He fought in and survived three wars.
My faith is what kept me going.
In persistence. And you think he looks young, you're right. He asked his mom to sign him up for the army at sixteen. She refused, but he went to the recruiter in downtown Ocala anyway.
I said, I see you're sad, I said, he said, yeah, that's for me. I said, well, I consider myself a man. No, you took me on.
So he asked his aunt to fake his age in the paper world.
She was a huge kid, you know?
All of this military history, accommodations, and pictures. Jennifer made a water underground.
I'm honored to be a daughter.
Honor they ran, didn't they? He had the idea. Tell me, do you want to get one more video? Did you don't really know Hoppy?
Yep, I told you I don't get it.
It was time to get to going down.
I told you I'm on the food.
It's a joy for me to be here to help him live the rest of his life doing this.
Wow.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, our hometown hero, Granville Hoppy Hopkins. For sure. Thank you so much. There's very few people that can actually follow that up. But we're gonna bring a young lady down here now who's got thirty... She started year thirty-six of her run on the commission. And she is truly walking history for Palatka. So I'm gonna bring up Vice Mayor Marion Lawson Brown now to do her black history presentation.
Good evening. I don't call my, I don't call myself a speaker, I call myself a storyteller. And you wonder why? Because black history was never written, recorded. Because they would not let slaves learn how to read and write. So granddad and grandma would sit down with their children and grandchildren and tell their life stories. And so, I'm a history book fan. I'm a pap rat. I save as much stuff as I can. If you look at the table on the back, some of you before you leave, you'll see some pictures and things, and newspaper articles that have been saved over a period of time. People do not realize how much black people gave to the City of Palatka. I sat here and looked at some of the stuff and started counting how many businesses used to be here before integration. And I counted somewhere around thirty-seven. We don't have them now because they kind of faded away. Some people died, some people left. But we did not carry on the torch. Black Palatka really started, it was called Newtown. And Newtown started somewhere around Seventh to Eighth Street on St. John's. And it went across Lee and back into the North Side. Actually, Palatka was integrated before integration because we had mixed neighborhoods. And we grew up together. So people didn't always realize it, what Palatka is gonna place, that if you wanted somewhere good to live, this is where you came. Five generations of my family have lived here. They came in nineteen fourteen. And my grandfather started three businesses, he and my grandmother. But I wanna tell you that Palatka had the first black accredited high school in the state of Florida. None of, most people don't know that. We worked really hard, and we didn't have good books, we got used books. But we had the challenge, who, the people who wanted to make it, made it, made it. The person that was president and the student body at that time was named Carol Finley. His daddy, we called Pop Finley. He had a barber shop downtown, and he cut white hair. He didn't cut black hair, he did white hair. Mr. Finley became a doctor, and he taught at Morehouse College Biology, he built a biology department. He left there, and he went to Howard University where he taught zoology. And his children grew up with me, we were friends. And his daughter told me that when we were children, he and a group of people were doing testing and stuff and working on D and A. And we never thought that somebody's doing that. But back in the time when we were youngsters, they were doing it. We had a band that went and played the Cotton Club in New York. It was called the Belton Syncope. It started out with five or six people, I think they ended up with about sixteen. They hung out with Duke Ellington, the older people who remember, Counting, Ella Fitzgerald, all of the biggies. Mr. Belton is, his name was C.S. Belton, Courtney Belton. His brother's name was Will Wilbert. Wilbert played the piano, Mr. Belton played saxophone. And they traveled, they had a bus, and they traveled what they called the Chislin Circuit. That was where black bands traveled from one town to another and played. And they not only played for blacks, they played for whites also. They were so good friends with Mr. Belton that a number of times they came to Palatka because they were in Jacksonville, just because they were friends and they had their gigs, they said, in Little Old Palatka. So Palatka has been on the map, this was in the early nineteen hundreds. Mr. Belton got sick and had to come home. But he came home and opened up a restaurant. His dad and those were here way before us. And they had a restaurant right by the train station. And you could catch the train, but you couldn't eat on the train, folks. So they get, people would get off the train and go and buy food from them. Eleventh Street was the business corridor for us. And we had places like Ozdus Chicken Shack, before the Colonel ever thought about trying. And it was some of the best chicken you could have gotten. We had restaurants downtown, in that area, that catered. The Granger family, the husband and wife started it. And what they did is they catered to blacks. They worked at the meals, the circus meals and stuff. And they didn't get paid but once a week, and they might not have money. So they gave them credit. So every week, they go in and pay them for the food that they got. It worked so well that two of their daughters opened restaurants in the, at the same time, in the downtown. We had black mail carriers. It was three of them, Mr. Arne Ozdus, Senior, and Mr. Arne Ozdus, Junior, and Mr. Hughie Page. They, the Ozdas lived over on the North, on the North Side, on what we call the Hill. And they carried mail all over town for years. We, we looked at A. Philip Randolph. He wasn't from Palatka, but I wanted to tell you all. A. Philip Randolph was concerned about how quarters were being paid on the train. They weren't making any money, I think probably living on tips and trying to take care of families. He organized them, and they got the money that they needed to be paid to do the work that they were doing. But he went farther than that, and people don't always tell it. He organized a march on Washington for Martin Luther King. So even though you think that we had inferior schools, we had superior teachers. We had grocery stores in East Palatka. We have a Maxwell who got a corner store. People had did their businesses either right on the corner or next to their houses, or sometimes even in their houses. Austin had another grocery store that people didn't have cars and they couldn't cross the river. So they did most of their grocery shopping, but they didn't get out the fields, right there in those stores. There was a little lady named Polly Jackson, and our schools did not have restaurants, I mean lunchrooms in them. And so, what she did was she opened a little store right across the street from the school. And she sold stuff like, so I said, son, we did hot dogs and the stuff that you, that kids could eat. The kids didn't have the lunchroom, so how a lot of them got fed was, it was kind of like a buddy system. We took brown bags from school, the Central Academy. It was U-shaped, and we'd go in the backyard, tear open the brown bag and share with Sammy that your parent would have given you an extra one to share with somebody. It was a good time, and it was a sharing time. And everybody kind of looked out for everybody. We had two ice cream parlors that were black owned. One was right on Lee Street. If you know where Tyra City is, it was where they're parking their cars. On Tyra City, it was a two-story house, and then another small building behind it. And Mr. Clark and his wife opened up a ice cream parlor. The other one was out on the North Side on Thirteenth Street. So that we could get ice cream whether we had to go to another store or not. It was in our neighborhood. We had taxis. Mr. Ben Wilson was one of the first persons to have a taxi here in this town. And he picked up and carried blacks wherever they needed to go. When he got to him to carry them, he had Mr. Bill Brown. They called it Bill's Taxi. And they picked up people and they picked them up from the bus station and train station and took them all over. We had a number of barber shops. Mr. Hunter, who was the older man, had a barber shop. I told you about Mr. Finley. Mr. Peacock had something we thought was really sporty. He had a three-chair barber shop. Usually they had a one-chair barber shop where they cut the hair in somebody's jar. But he had a three-chair barber shop. Mr. Lacy had a cup, a two-chair barber, chair barber shop. And they seemed pretty busy. Before I became the first female, and they used to say the first black elected official in the city, there was a Mr. Browning, and his name was Dave Browning. And he was the first black during transition, that was the first black city commissioner in the City of Palatka. But Paul Browning didn't look like me, he looked like you. His daughter danced at the Cotton Club in New York. And you had to be of a certain color to do that. And she was one of their dancers there back in the day when the bands and stuff were famous. So people ventured out and went and did a lot of other things. We had two cleaners. We had our own cleaners down in, on the Eleventh Street car. We had our own cleaners down in, on the Eleventh Street corridor. One of them was the Haller cleaners, and the other ones was the Howard cleaners. They were in about the same block of Eleventh Street between Main and Olive, uh, Madison Street and Olive Street. We had movie theaters. One movie theater was on Eleventh Street, and later they closed out and they moved to Madison Street. That building is still there. It's a Quonset hood, I think that's what you call those Amby barracks thing. They took one of those and turned them into it, and now it's a church over there. Um, we had bars. Our folks didn't have any place they could go, so most of them had to, to go to a bar somewhere. They had Ellis Bar that sat on the corner of, uh, Olive Street and Eleventh, a Pocket Bar, a Palatka Liquor, and we, we graduated. Because in the eighties, uh, Askew Victor came and opened a supper club for us. So it gave us an upgrade of a place to go. He has been so good that he let us go in and raise money for Bethune-Cookman, put on projects, programs in it. And it gave us another outing and a place to go without having to leave town. Uh, how's my time? Okay. We had a garage, we had garages down there. We had two new, so the garage who sold gas. But we had an Austin Dimes Garage, and Mr. Austin Dimes only sell gas, he repaired cars. That building is still, it's on the corner of Madison and Eleventh Street. I think somebody turned it into some kind of, uh, a restaurant. Um, I have to think. We, um, when we started integrating, it wasn't a really hard thing for us to do because we had a judge. And Judge Revels decided that he needed to have a group of folks that would sit down and talk about problems before the problem happened. And he called it his biracial committee. It was six blacks, six whites. And before problems came up, or problems that they would hear, they would sit down and talk about them and try to solve some of the things. So that the transitions from going from being segregated to integrated gave us a lot more time to, and, and, and easier way to do it. We also had doctors here. Dr. Hester, H.B. Hester. He was a dentist, but he was a thirty-third degree patient. And he served as the grand, were the matron of the state of Florida for a while. Um, we had, uh, Dr. James A. Long and his brother, Dr. C.C. Long. Dr. C.C. Long was a dentist, and his brother was Dr. James A. Long. James A. Long's school is named after. He did not only deliver black babies, he delivered as many black babies and waited on as many whites, whites as anybody else did in this town. He was an excellent doctor, and people tended to go to him because of the goodness of what he did. I, uh, kind of saved it to last, but my grandmother, my grandfather came here in nineteen fourteen, and I thought he started the funeral home in nineteen fifty, but we got awarded by the African-American Funeral Directors this year, and we found out that he started his funeral home in nineteen fourteen. So we are a hundred and six years old. One of the oldest businesses still in this town. Uh, my grandmother went off to school. She became a licensed funeral director. My mother was a licensed funeral director. I'm a licensed funeral director, and I have two sons that are licensed funeral directors. So we've kind of kept it in the family. I've been prodding my grand, my grands to see if we can get one more generation out of them. I hope so. But the other thing, some of you might have heard, oh, D.A. Boyd had a funeral home too. They came in nineteen twenty-four, and so they had two black funeral homes. People did not involve them back in the day until they got some of these funeral homes going because they, they buried people, rest them, have to bury them the next day. These two, uh, people came in, they opened it up so that they could have services and do more things. My grandmother started the Mary Lawson Hospital in nineteen eighteen, and they would not let her house black and white on the same floor. But whites were upstairs, blacks were downstairs. And we had a lot of people that were born in her hospital. And a little, and I brag about it, the two of us, a living kitchen, and I were both born in grandmother's hospital. I like to say that there were, the first person elected to public office for us was Stan Taylor. He became, he worked on the school boards for two terms, and he went to, um, we talked him into being a county commissioner for two terms. He was the first out of the second, and called later to third elected official, black official in Palatka.
So, some of you may have been able to look at some of the slides. Robert X. Jenkins, uh, he had a soldier who dug under grenades to save his troops in Vietnam. Jenkins Middle School's named after him. Uh, Dr. Higgins, who was one of the local doctors here in town. Dentists, I'm sorry, dentists here in town.
And he and, he and my, uh, husband, when they said they could integrate, uh, the golf course, they went out and did that. Um, that's H.B. Pinky. He was one of the first to get a job in the town, had his school board. He is from East Palatka, a lot, some of his family still lives in East Palatka. That is, that, that is Dr. Harold Finley. That's Bill, who wrote Bill's Taxi stand.
She had three taxi businesses here in Palatka when I was a kid. And, you know, we look at transit today, and we don't even have that existing right now. We, 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 it's hard to find an Uber.
That's the Granger family, Mr. Mr. Granger, who had the restaurant. We also had a, a druggist, I forgot about him, Dr. Passan. This is Mr. Jenkins, I mean Johnson. Mr. Johnson trained himself to become a telegrapher. He worked for the, um, Western Union people, one of the Western Union people, for seventy-five years. Um, that is Dr. H.B. Hester in his, um, Masonic paraphernalia.
Green and White House on Seventh and Reed, historic home that you see, that was his home.
And I, I would like to say, oh, that's, that's the, um, van, and that's their bus.
And that's the Hallenach mural, it's on Angeles.
That, that's, uh, the high school, the school. The one, it burned down, the old one burned down. It was on the corner of Eighth and, um, Madison Street, I mean Main Street. In that corner is where the old Winn-Dixie was. That's some of the classes that were, went to school there. I'd like to tell you too, my mother was financial secretary for the Eastern Stopper of the state of Florida for ten years. That's the basketball team from nineteen fifteen. And the very young man from the, from the right was Mr. Browning's, uh, son, who, who was the commissioner. That is the, some of the people who were there when the school was, uh, students. Dr. Harold Finley sits in that left hand, at the right hand, the corner over there. That's the graduate, leading class from Central Academy High School.
Nineteen thirty-seven.
Oh, that's my parents in there. My dad was a thirty-third degree major, and then my mother was Eastern Stopper. That, that is my grandmother and my grandfather. I don't know how many so many pictures of us got in there. That, that's a family picture of us.
And a little, a little short one second to the right.
That, the night I was elected, that's me being interviewed by Butch from back. Everybody knew Butch, Butch was our reporter for the.
You can get the love that Butch got, you're okay.
That's ten a person in that name.
And so many people may ask, why do we take so much time to talk about the history? And so Ms. Brown has been here on this commission for thirty-six years. The history is what makes Palatka special. There's just as much black history as there is history across the track, but it's all American history. This is the last true snapshot of old Florida. It's the one place that you had to thrive an African-American community, get a thriving white community, and overall, you have a community that defied many of the things that happened throughout the state and the country. Palatka desegregated well before many other places did. And there were folks who voluntarily desegregated in many places. But the one thing about our history is, is if you don't tell it, you lose it. And so oftentimes, we forget to share what the gems are in this community. And with Ms. Brown leaving this commission, I wanted to make sure that we memorialize what she has in her head. There's so much more about this city, about the history. Mary McLeod Bethune opened a women's college in eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen oh-three on Thirteenth and St. John's, Palatka Mission School. And it is now the founding ground for Bethune-Cookman College, University that's over in Daytona. So all this stuff was right here in Palatka. And we've got to make sure that we continue to tell the history so that young people in the back of the room, like young Mr. Campbell, they understand why they, what it is to be proud of Palatka and the fact that they can achieve anything that they want right here in this community. And so we have to continue to tell that story because we're losing too many of our historians. And the stories are being kept, but they're not being shared. And so we have to continually share those stories so that our history remains on the heart of everyone around. So again, we want to thank you Vice Mayor for the work that you did and for just your contribution to this community and for sharing just a little bit of black history with us today. So let's give her a round of applause. While she shares that story, she never tells anyone that she's received uh, the highest award that you can receive in the Florida League of Cities. She's the longest standing, second longest standing member on the Florida League of Cities Board of Director and also the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. Uh, and she's served in various capacities throughout this state. Uh, chairing transportation boards and other boards throughout, policy boards throughout the league, and bringing that stuff back to Palatka, being cutting edge in the stuff that she was trying to bring back. We joked earlier that, uh, she's been bringing stuff back to Palatka that was new on the tongues of many people throughout the state. And it was resistant because sometimes change is difficult, and now it's cutting edge again. It's on its second trip thirty years later, and she's still fighting for those same things to come back into this community. And so we have a gem in Mary Lawson Brown, and I want us to always make sure that we treasure her. And for those of you who can, uh, coming up, uh, in the middle of March, on March 12th, there's a, a gala that's being, that's being held down in Miramar, Florida to recognize her for her years of service by the Florida League of Cities and the Florida Black Caucus of locally elected officials. And so we will again, uh, recognize her statewide for the work that she's done in this community. And we thank you for what you've done, and we, it's also a blessing that your grandparents instilled that legacy and that work ethic inside of you so that you can come back here and continue to love Palatka. So, thank you. Next up is our Black History Proclamation. And this proclamation reads as follows. Says, whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson, founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, initiated Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six, which grew into Black History Month during the nineteen seventies. So designated to recognize, honor, I'm sorry, nineteen twenty-six, to designate and recognize, honor, and record the historical contributions and achievements made by blacks in the armed forces, architecture, business, civil rights, economics, education, entertainment, exploration, history, law, literature, medicine, music, politics, science, and sports. And whereas February is nationally designated as Black History Month and is annually set aside for all Americans to focus on the significant role African-Americans are playing in our country, in our country's history, and in shaping our nature and culture. Whereas the Palatka City Commission wishes to maintain and promote harmonious intercultural relations and highlight the rich ethnic and cultural diversity throughout the city of Palatka. And whereas this year's theme, African-Americans and the Vote, coincides with the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Fifteenth Amendment, which gave African-American men the right to vote. This amendment to the Constitution ratified in eighteen seventy prohibits government from denying or abridging citizens' right to vote based on race, color, or previous conditions of certitude. And whereas twenty-twenty also marks the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the first African-American to serve in Congress in eighteen seventy. Harry Revels, a Mississippi Republican, served a one-year term in the Senate where he fought for justice and racial equality. Senator Revels, an AME church minister, military chaplain, and college administrator, made history serving our nation in a building that had been constructed by slave laborers just a decade earlier. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the city of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim the month of February twenty-twenty as Black History Month in the city of Palatka. And we urge all citizens to join the Palatka City Commission and celebrate February as Black History Month each year and to share in the spirit of the month and take part in related activities that reflect the goals of Black History Month. And witness where appearing to set my hand, it calls to be affixed the seal of the city of Palatka, Florida, on this thirteenth day of February in the year by Lord two thousand twenty. I'll entertain a motion. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimous. We want to present this.
It's a young man.
Mr. Campbell, can you come up for me just a second? We want to make sure we always teach our children our history, and I want to present you with this proclamation today. And this is a Black History Proclamation, so this is something that will always remind you of Black history, okay? Thank you, sir.
Did you hear the last name? That's my nephew.
Well, he knows where we came from, now he knows where he can go.
Next up, uh, Mr. Superintendent, will you join me for a second? And anyone else here for the March of Dimes?
I wore two hats.
So this year's chairperson is our superintendent, Sir Rick Cerancy. I've had the honor of serving as the chair of this great cause as well. Uh, this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas one in thirty-three babies born in the U.S. are born with birth, with a birth defect, resulting in billions of dollars of cost for care and accounting for twenty percent of all infant deaths, the March of Dimes, a voluntary health organization, began in nineteen thirty-eight when radio announcer and comedian Eddie Cantor urged his listeners to send their spare dimes to the White House to contribute to a fund for funding a cure for polio. It's working to ensure that healthy lives for American babies. And whereas twenty-twenty marks the eighty-second year, the March of Dimes has been safeguarding America's infant health and has been a pioneer in preventing birth defects, the nation's number-one health problem, through programs of research, community services, education, advocacy, and prenatal care. And whereas the March of Dimes kicked off its twenty-twenty fundraising campaign chaired by school superintendent Rick Cerancy on February eleventh and will continue until the day of the official March of Dimes, March for Babies event on May ninth, twenty twenty. The twenty-twenty fundraising goal is seventy thousand dollars and one hundred percent participation from schools. Putnam County is proud to be the only county in the nation where there has been one hundred percent participation from schools in the past. And whereas the nation's hope for assuring future generations a healthy start in life depends upon the efforts and commitment of all Americans to participate in fundraising events like pink and blue jeans for babies, the sale of chocolate, footprints, and other government, corporate, and individual fundraising events leading up to the March for Babies at the Riverfront Park. The March for Babies, formerly Walk America, has been successful for more than fifty years, raising more than two-point-four billion dollars for the March of Dimes mission to improve the health of babies by preventing birth defects and infant mortality. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the city of Palatka, Florida, together with the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim February thirteenth through May ninth, twenty twenty, as March of Dimes fundraising days in the city of Palatka. And we urge all citizens of our community to support the important efforts of the March of Dimes in helping to give babies a healthier start in life by participating and contributing to various March for Babies team fundraisers. And witness where appearing to set my hand, it calls to be affixed the seal of the city of Palatka, Florida, on this thirteenth day of February in the year by Lord two thousand twenty. Terrell Hill, Mayor, and Mrs. Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. I'll entertain a motion at this time. Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you, Mayor. And first of all, I'm very humbled to be up here after Mr. Hopkins and Mrs. Brown have been here and honored, and I tell you, I can't be more proud of Palatka and Black History Month and, and what all our forefathers and mothers have done here in Palatka to make this such a great city and county. And, uh, I always talk to Ms. Brown about things going on in the city. I know my nephew is a good friend of hers, and many of you up here. He's the mayor in another town. But, uh, I truly... But I truly respect you and honor you and thank you for sharing that history. It means a lot to all of us. And the school district is, you know, is made up of people of all colors and we're all about unity. And I'm just so proud of Palaka and Putnam County, especially in light of the fact we have so much division in our nation right now. And I can truly say Palaka is one area where we come together and work for one common goal, and I'm very proud of that. And the March of Dimes is one example of where we come together and take care of our own. As a matter of fact, I have a, you know, kind of a personal reason to do this as well. I have a granddaughter who has special needs, who had issues at birth. And, you know, I truly am, I want to see her, you know, go through life and have a quality of life as well as many other children in this community. So the communities that take care of their own and especially those that are most vulnerable are those communities that really grow and have a quality of life. So thank you all for being a part of that. We look forward to your support of the March of Dimes for this year. Thank you very much.
Next up, and I know you've heard this joke before, Lieutenant Dan? Commissioner Borum?
Join me right here, please. Well, on behalf of the City of Palaka, the City of Palaka presented with sincere appreciation to Lieutenant Dan Dixon, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, for promoting boating safety in Palaka, Florida. And we'd like for you to accept this on behalf of the City of Palaka Commission and staff for the boating safety that we conducted on, I mean, September of 2019. So we certainly appreciate everything that you've done for us and what you continue to do for us coming, within the coming months, March or Sep. We've got another initiative scheduled. And I'll let you kind of share that with the team since this has come to fruition. I had the opportunity to meet Lieutenant Dan Dixon at the Emergency Operations Center. A lot of times you don't have, you need to make sure that you speak to people and talk to people every chance you get. I learned that from Senator Audrey Gibson. She mentioned that anytime you meet or approach a person, speak to them and show yourself friendly. So you don't never know where the next opportunity is coming from. So this gave the City of Palaka a chance to give boating safety to a community, not just the City of Palaka, but surrounding areas as well within Putnam County. So with that being said, I really appreciate that. That was a very successful boating safety. And you have a word or two?
I sure do. So yeah, it's kind of funny, Commissioner Borum and I met at the EOC and, you know, something we've never really thought about, our job in law enforcement. We're usually on the boat all the time and do outreach events. But normally, when we do outreach events, we bring alligators and cool stuff that everybody's like, oh, that's neat. But boating safety has never been one of the things that we've really targeted. And when he brought it up, I was like, that's a great idea. The first time, it really didn't have a great game plan. We put it together, it was successful. But what we have coming up on March 7th is going to be awesome. For anybody that doesn't have a voter safety card or has children that they want to get the voter safety card for, the U.S. Coast Guard is going to come down and do a class at the River Center. And that will, it's going to be from 9:00 in the morning till roughly 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon with a short lunch break. At the end of that, they'll be able to get their, go home with their voter safety card. And we're also going to have, for those of you who don't have a voter safety card or don't need it or already have it, we're also going to have a demonstration up front. We're going to have some of our boats set up. We're going to have boats in the water. So if you want to know anything about boating, let us know. We'll have the Coast Guard, Fish and Wildlife. I've talked to Chief Grimes about possibly having the fire department out. So if we have a good display set up, come on out and see us.
I'm telling you how the commission would be part of this too because it's not just me, the commission helped support this whole thing. So I'd like to have the commission come join me in this. I kind of helped initiate it, but I couldn't have done it without the support of the commission.
Thank you again, Lieutenant Dan. But this has been a, but this has been a brainchild of Commissioner Borum. He deserves all the credit for working closely with Fish and Wildlife on this event. And it has been a wonderful event for the City of Palaka. We've all witnessed tragedies happen in this community from voter safety, and we know many folks who've had near calls. And so again, we thank you for just allowing the community to continually be educated on such important issues. Next up, we've got the Women's Club of Palaka and the Fire Department, Chief Grimes. And we ask the Women's Club to come up at this time. GFWC Women's Club of Palaka. You guys want to join us up front? Absolutely, thank you.
Good evening. We're here today to present a plaque to our local women's club. Over the last several years and the last decade or so, they've noticed the cancer risk for firefighters has severely increased over time. Our local women's club stepped up to the plate. They recognized the problem. They partnered with Hoods for Heroes through a local charity. The hoods are $130 apiece. Our local women's club was able to raise, I'm not sure what the number was. They bought one for all 25 of our City of Palaka firefighters. They were also able to supply them to some of the fire departments throughout the county. It was their tireless work that just, that made it happen. I mean, it was something that we were all going to have to do, but they were able to do it before we even had a chance. And I mean, that's just one way our community came together. They had a beautiful presentation for us. I mean, it was right there around Christmas time. So they had a beautiful meal set up. It was just a great day to go to the Women's Club. The Hoods for Heroes guys set up there. So we got to learn a lot during that day. I mean, I never realized how much the Women's Club had done until we arrived there that day. So it's really unique to have an organization like that inside of our community that cared enough to get this done for us. So we're ever so thankful for everything you did. We got to use the hoods today. So they have been into use several times since we've gotten them. So we thank you for everything you've done. And there's a plaque down here we'd like to present to you ladies and it says, "An appreciation to the GFWC Women's Club of Palaka for their generous donation to the City of Palaka Fire Department February of 2020."
Yes, I would. You know, Elizabeth was going to talk today since she had to go over to the plate. And if you want to have a senior, you have to go see a 37 firefighter. So I guess I have to talk today. Well, we started this back in July. It was a really good fundraiser, as you said, we went in with the Hoods for Heroes. So what we did, we decided to do 25, as many as it is. And we worked pretty diligently for a couple of months and we were able to do this. And we are so proud of our fire department. I'm the Public Issues Chair. We wanted to work with something for safety, so this was brought to me. And I thought this helped the community itself, not only just for certain things, but just for the fire department. And we thank them for all that they've done for the community.
And thank you to the Women's Club for just an awesome display of love to our firefighters. That's a wonderful gesture. We thank you and we're eternally grateful. Next up is public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes. No actual, we take it on topics of discussion. If you hear this bell ring, you're at three minutes and five seconds. Anyone here wishing, there are some yellow cards in the back of the room. There are yellow cards in the back of the room. Just when you come up, please give your name and address. I know we've got a lot of cards for the Arts League. It's not on the agenda. There's no report given today, but we'd love to have you give your comments. Thank you very much and thank you for your service. So we've got a public comment pad. So is there, so is there any, I'm sorry, ma'am. You had a comment. You had your hand raised? I got you. So we're, I'll call it over. I'll call it from there. So we're here. First up, Mr. Jutress.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'll tell you, this has been one of the best meetings that I've attended. Mary, what a nice presentation. That was great. But what a nice meeting all the way around. But my topic was that I wanted to talk about the CRA, Community Redevelopment Authority. And I think it's, this is a good time for us to start looking with all the growth and things that are happening in the community that we have a community redevelopment authority that is made up of citizens instead of being the city commission listening to the community redevelopment meeting and then going back in and having a meeting over the same topics or subjects all over again. If it was made up of citizens, like most community redevelopment authorities are made up of, and they in turn have a chairman that would have to report to the city commission, it would still be working in the same direction, but you'd have more people participating. And also, this would be one way to keep it working because that way, if you have a full-time person working on the job instead of once every other month or whenever the CRA meets, this way we would have better participation going in the community. Just food for thought to grow in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Seruso.
Vito Russo, 415 Imes Street. I'd like to start off by saying the meeting, reflecting what Mr. Jutress said, the meeting started off as a beautiful start to the meeting. I tell you, the two presentations between Hoppy and Mary was really wonderful. I won't be up here very long. I'm just up here to support the Palaka Art League. I am speaking not only on my behalf, but on behalf of the Southside Neighborhood as an example of the neighborhood's support for the Art League. I think back in November, we voted unanimously to recommend to the CRA board a $20,000 grant to help the Art League do some repairs on the Tillman House. We believe that the Art League is good stewards of the Tillman House and we support them 100% and hopefully it'll be able to stay there. So, thank you.
Laura Evans.
I would just like to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for the opportunity to speak. My name is Laura Evans. I'm the vice president of the Palaka Art League. I brought with me today my fellow board members and other Art League members. It's my understanding that the place the Art League calls home is on the bubble. That is to say, our lease is currently not being annually renewed by the city, but is on a monthly basis with the city while it undergoes evaluation by the city. The Palaka Art League, to speak of history, has been around for 29 years, 25 years at the Tillman House alone. It is iconic for us when our patrons and the community think about the Palaka Art League. They think of the Tillman and vice versa. We believe we will play or replay a vital role, an increasingly important role in our education as our curriculum is contentedly being removed from our schools. Last summer, our KSAP, or Kids Summer Art Program, grew suddenly from 45 students to 192 students. Recently, we have been asked by a local school and nursing home to provide them with art education. We also provide scholarships for a local student to attend St. John's River College in their arts program. We have an annual six-week Holiday House boutique. We are going to celebrate that event. This will be our 25th year this Christmas. It's a very unique event. It's a shop where the items are produced by local artisans and it's unique to the surrounding area. We attract people from at least five counties and frankly, there's nothing like it. We are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) group and we are not able to purchase our own building. We wouldn't want to even if we had the money. The Tillman is our home. It's an integral part of who we are and the Tillman is in our blood. This Saturday, we will be having a tea party for all ages. It's children-friendly. We would like to invite the mayor and the city commissioners and the manager to attend the event. All you have to do is show up and have a good time. Thank you.
Wayne McClain, 285 West River Road. I have, the first thing I'd like to talk about is as a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board, we have been remiss in not coming to the commission on a regular basis to update them on the activities the Chamber of Commerce has taken place. So this year, we have decided to come under public comment once a month at every commission meeting to let them know the activities that we are working on. This will not take the place of agenda items that we will bring in front of the commission. And so the first thing, obviously, we're going to talk about and wanted to have a handout here for the commissioners is the economic impact of the two recent fishing tournaments that we've had going on, which has been great cooperation from all the city staff. So the economic impact of the current FLW fishing tournament we've got going on is estimated to be $1.2 million. And on the one that just left, the Bass Elite, was also $1.6 million. In addition, the publicity that we got on ESPN, ESPN2, about our city seeing the banner, seeing the mayor directing traffic was very nice. So it's been a great economic impact. And for the commissioners, I have some data for that. The other thing in regards to the chamber is we have submitted something that's been very close to Mary Lawson Brown's heart. It is a USDA grant for an incubator study that's going to go on in the City of Palaka. Being fully funded, being fully funded by the USDA grant. In addition, the chamber has paid for and has, and have Madison Street strategies underway to look and manage our opportunity zones here in Putnam County, one being in downtown Palaka, the two in Palaka, and one in Crescent City. This will enable monies to come in from outside investors to help our downtown Palaka be revitalized. So a lot of things going on. We will be back next month. Those are the- So a lot of things going on. We will be back next month. Those are the really just the highlight items I wanted to bring this time. And thank you.
I'd like to say, I have sat here with my fellow Commissioners and they've kind of adopted a saying, "We're better together." And I want to thank you for coming and quick making us more together by coming and letting us know what the Chamber is doing and they know what's future and so we're better together.
We'll be back every month. You may not see me, but you'll see Charlie Duncan, Biggie Bache, or somebody along that line. Mr. Mayor, if I may read a letter.
We've got another guy named Wayne McLean.
I did want to read a letter and I have a copy for all the Commissioners that I may take a moment. It's dated January 29, 2020, to the Honorable Mayor Terrell Hill. Dear Mr. Mayor, recently, the Beck Automotive Group had a vehicle stolen from one of its dealerships. From the moment the incident occurred to the recovery of the vehicle and the arrest of the juveniles involved, the City of Placa Police Department were totally involved and professional in their actions. I specifically want to commend the following officers in their thoroughness and professionalism and their follow-through on this incident with me and other staff members of Beck Organizations. To say the officers were diligent and persistent in the recovery and capture of the individual involved was a total understatement. The officers are Officer Thomas Johnson, Eli McNatt, Officer Maria Harmon, Officer Holly Guerera... Did I do that? Okay. Officer Ashton Cassidy, Officer Andy Snyder, Officer David Hager, Officer Brandon Hornsby, and Officer Michael Call. Sincerely, Wayne McLean, Vice President of Beck Automotive Group. Mayor, I can't wait. What a great job they did.
Thank you very much. And you can send the work to Chief Shaw on the scooter. And just let him know that you guys are doing a great job. Next up is someone not named Wayne McLean. Ms. Ketchum. Oh, I've got you. Another Campbell. Ms. Lukisha Campbell.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name is Lukisha Campbell and I'm a Prevention Specialist for the Hamley Foundation. We provide Level One substance abuse education at the middle and high school levels. My counties that I serve in are Placa and Flagler. On February 29th, we are hosting a youth leadership summit and I am asking the City of Placa to assist us with providing all participants one basic meal. I have a flyer and I have my business card. If you have any questions or concerns. We are expecting between 150 to 200 students. And this will be held, I don't know if I said it, at the Jenkins Middle School Gymnasium. Thank you.
Next up, Kate McDaniel.
Thank you, please. Thank you, members of the City of Placa and the Mayor. What I'm trying to say... It's funny, hard. All my life, I wouldn't be an artist. I've been born and I came here not knowing what I was going to find. I found the Placa Art League. I belong to one in Fort Myers. And I'm trying to get myself together. Anyway, I've been able to do a mural. That was a dream of mine. In fact, I did two. The one on Third Street with Spider Ward and the Drumhead. Among all the other ones. We did that for your charge. It was something we donated from the Placa Art League to the city. I'm asking you to consider keeping the Tillman House at our home. It just has no importance, I guess, to the Placa Art League. My grandfather was a commercial artist in Georgia, in Agawas. My father told me this years ago, and that was inspiring. He was the designer of Shelley's Four Roses and that's an old, old company. I don't promote alcohol. I don't drink. But it inspired me. And being a member of the Art League, I've been able to express my art and weave it, you know, at the Holiday House. This is a wonderful thing. We bring hundreds of people into this town during that event. They are so elated. I mean, we just... I lived there nights when we had that. And they were just... You couldn't walk through the building with so many people and they're just waiting to buy our art wares. And we demand that people do this from their own things. We don't will our kids or anything. We have to create these items so that they are truly a work of art. And I just wanted to ask you to consider keeping the Tillman House at our home. People know that. They recognize it. And I know that it is a worthy situation there. And all the things we want to do with the children and the nursing home and it's going to benefit this community tremendously. So I'm going to leave it at that and appreciate all you do. And I'm just thankful that I can be a member of it and thank you again.
I'll go ahead and comment so that it's always good. It's interesting. We start having conversations here in rooms where nobody shows up. It's always interesting how the work gets to the public. But it's real difficult to make decisions when you don't feel the chair and you don't tell the story. I don't know what information. I saw the newspaper article. Didn't get a chance to read it in totality. But I think the level of angst or even the passion that's brought into that, maybe if they're premature because the city managers haven't done reports. He hasn't given any findings. But I do think it's a good thing to have you here because many of us sitting here don't know what you do. And I say all the time that we never get an opportunity. We never do a good job of telling our own stories. We don't do it as a Commission very well. We're trying to do more. We put money in the budget to actually have people put the public information out in a different way. So we funded a PIO. But I don't think overall, there's a lot of knowledge of what the true purpose of the Art League is. Tonight has been very educational for us, more than anything else. Because that story hasn't been told to everybody. Everybody doesn't know about the 29-year history. Everybody doesn't know about the 25 years of the Tillman House. And so even in my business, I still didn't know a lot. And so, but I do think there are opportunities all around. It's never going to be our intention to put anybody out of business. Our intention is to look at every property that we have in the city that's on a dollar lease and figure out if it's the highest and best use, if there's a public benefit. So the city manager's looking at all those properties. He's going in, he's interviewing, he's talking, he's visiting, he's doing all of that to make sure that at the end of the day, that we're a good shepherd for the money and the people. And outside of that, we all love Placa. We all do this, not for money, but we do it for love. And so at all stages of the game, we're all in the same... We're on the same team. We wear the same uniform and it's the Placa uniform. And we're going to make sure that we continue to be better together. So we don't know what the report says because the report is not finished. But the information today has been helpful. And so, no more tears. This is no chronic zone.
Well, we're frightened because we don't have a lease, so it's scary for us.
Well, your lease is a one-year lease at all times. And so every year, there's an opportunity to reevaluate. The problem is there hasn't been reevaluation for 25 years on a regular basis. So we're going to always reevaluate. We've reevaluated what we did over in the Cooper Center. We've reevaluated what we did with Stuart Marchman. We've reevaluated what we're doing with the Arts Council. So every one of these properties is going to be evaluated to figure out if there's a cost-benefit analysis as to what's in place. And that's where we are. And it's not anything against any organization. It's actually, it's what we should be doing as an elected body to make sure that we're shepherds of the money. And at the end of the day, that every property provides and derives the proper benefits and to put the things in place. That's where we are. And that's what we're doing. And so again, we thank you guys for being here. We thank you for your patience and listening to what was going on. And if you have any questions or any other things that are out there, feel free to contact us. We're all very accessible and we're very open to conversations and come in and we thank you for the invite. I won't be able to make it this weekend because I've got a prior engagement. But we try to get to as much stuff as we can. So when we're invited, we come. And that's just where we are. Sometimes we come, we're not invited. But again, thank you guys for being here.
You're always invited.
And thank you for the work that you do in this community. And again, just thank you very much. A lot of times volunteering is very thank this job. So we definitely appreciate it. Anything else on the Commission? Let's give them a round of applause. So next up, we've gone through public comment. We're on the consent agenda. This is the shortest-lost meeting we've had. We're at the consent agenda. Are there any items besides item D we wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Three D.
I've got you on D. Anything else?
Three D.
There's a motion on the floor for everything but three D. Is there a second? Polling favor say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Let us lead. Moving on to item three D, adopt resolution number 2020R14, authorize issuance of special event permits number 2817 for the 74th Annual Florida Today Festival Event on March 7th and 8th, 2020. Set forth provisions of the permit granting permission to exceed the level of noise levels and setting advance permit and other fees downtown Placa. Deputy is the agent. And there were a couple of questions on this and I've got one speaker card. I'm going to bring the speaker up first. Ms. Ketchum, it's going to the floor at this time.
I'm leading, Ms. Ketchum, 1027 South 12th Street, Placa Garden. And as I usually do, I was going through the agenda packet last night, this time about 1:30 in the morning. And when I got to the Azalea Festival, I found some things that caused me to have one question and two requests on the memo that you get on Gen Island D, three D. The memo, the summary, it says, "Which is scheduled for March the 7th and 8th, 2020, at the Raveen Gardens." However, when you go back to the application, it talks about... They're closing on the application for the special event. They're talking about closing Memorial Parkway, St. John's Avenue, Saturday and Sunday and all that kind of stuff. So my question is, is the Azalea Festival this time, for the first time in its history, going to be held exclusively at the Raveen Gardens or is it going to be downtown at the waterfront where it usually is? So that's... I think it was probably a typo on your memo from your staff, but it caused me concern and there was no event map, so I couldn't look at that. The other thing, two things, I have a request. I noticed that once again, the festival, and it's not just Azalea, every festival does this. They forget that we have churches on Sunday morning that have services. There's nine big churches in downtown Placa. They have services, most of them begin out between 11:30 and 12, but they do have morning services on Sunday. And the amplified sound is due to start at 10 a.m. on Sunday morning. I request that you change that and have it start... If you got it at 11:30, not too bad, but if you do it at 12 o'clock instead of having it start at 10 o'clock in the morning. Because these churches, if it's amplified sound like from music and stuff like that, it will interrupt the church services in a lot of...
What if they do a planned church service in downtown and now they can no longer have sound?
Well, same. If they don't have amplified sound, that's one thing. If they got a noise in French in the churches, I just took the rough head count of the churches. There's probably about 1,800 people attend those churches. So I think we need to take it... And I know the festival, they don't do it on purpose. They just don't think about the fact that the churches do meet on Sunday morning. And I think you need to think about adjusting the time that the sound starts, the amplified sound. The other thing is, if you could get the festival coordinators to make sure that the helicopter flights, which are going every 15 minutes for 11 hours on Saturday and seven hours on Sunday, are not flying over the residential neighborhoods. They can fly down along the river shore. They can go around the ravines, go out to the airport. They don't have to be flying over the residential neighborhoods. Basically, one west of the railroad track. These helicopters shake the house. They scare the pets. It's pretty disturbing noise. And for those of us who have migraines induced by noise, it is a problem. So if they could just adjust the helicopter ride, the flight pattern... I know the helicopter ride is a big money getter. I get that. I have no problem with it. They're just not... They need to be flying every 15 minutes over residential neighborhoods. And that's all I had. And I thank you for listening. Did you ask anything? Ask them?
Sure. Any comments, questions, something to mention? Seeing none, entertain a motion. There's a motion to... We can check with the... The correction as far as the location? There's a motion to amend with the correction of the location to downtown Placa. And the other... Is there a second to that motion? Motion for a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm not 100% sure on some of the things as it relates to the helicopter ride, noise level, and then amplified sound. If... I don't know how that works in terms of the amplified sounds in the church. We did something along those lines with a previous festival. It was amplified sound. It was the last... Right. The Blue Crab, I think it was the Blue Crab Festival. There was some...
The band was next to the church.
Right, okay. I don't know the layout of the particular festival and where the sound is going to be. So we need to really consider that.
Can you bring it to the attention of the people who are doing it?
For the last setting before you... Any further discussion? Any thoughts on Commissioner Borum's comments? Seeing none. Polling favor say aye. Oppose, one name. Vote passes four to one. Thank you very much. Let's make sure we get what Mr. Deputy on concern should address.
Well, I think if that's the case, we're going to have to address it as a whole and not just one specific organization because we do have other festivals. We do have other things that go down in the riverfront. So that's something that we would have to address as a whole and not with one specific organization.
Yeah, but I think the reality is, isn't this coming up first? I understand what you're saying from a policy standpoint. And I think there's been ample consideration for other events that are going on in the vicinity to make sure they're, you know, being true. But I think we can get what Mr. Deputy... I'm pretty sure he can assure you that he takes into consideration. He goes to church in the general vicinity and he takes into consideration that he doesn't impede upon anyone's work experience. However, with that being said, be careful of any policies. There's a little thing called separation of church and state that you may overlook that. So we'll move forward on the agenda. City Manager's Report, Mr. Shanahan. SBDC's not giving a report today.
Have to pull that up or I'll fall down the stairs. Today, good evening, Commissioners. Today's a pretty easy one. I just want to give an update about last week. On Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, your commission, taking time from the regular jobs, actually traveled to the state Capitol to fight for your rights, basically. And they spoke with legislators, representatives, unimportant sort of the following topics. Number one, home rule. Short-term rentals, natural resources, private property rights, communication services, tax cuts, affordable housing, sale tax fairness, impact fees, sovereign immunity, and home-based businesses. And the goal is just, I want you to know how hard they work for you. They, as they say, they don't brag about themselves. They don't talk about what they give up and what they do. But they spend a day and a half going from one office to the next office and explaining how these things either benefit or hurt the community based on the decisions made up there. And a lot of people have a lot of things they didn't know about. And I think we'll see some good things from out there. But I just wanted you to know how hard they work for you. Thank you.
Guard.
Good evening. Good evening. So I was asked to kind of stop by and kind of give you an update on where we are with some of the IT projects we have going on and kind of what we're aiming for in the future. So some of the most notable things that we've done that I discussed with you last time I was up here. Since then, we've installed a lot of new server equipment we purchased. We installed a new firewall. We've got new computers and laptops almost for the entire city at this point that we have deployed across the board right now. Excuse me. We've put in some new battery backups for lighting protection inside the police department. And we've rolled out some cybersecurity awareness training for the entire city right now that we've been running through. Some of the upcoming things that we're talking about, we've been working through right now. One of the big things, we need to upgrade the internet speed at the City Hall and the police department to be able to move forward with some of the projects that we're looking at. We're looking at migrating email, we're looking at doing some off-site backups, and we're looking at a new phone system that would be implemented for the entire city. And a lot of that stuff right now is kind of hinging on getting upgraded internet. So we've been working with Logan on getting financing set up for all of that stuff. So we should be good going up front. And we have some new software right now that we're going to be working with the police department for, for some of their dispatching software and for some of their finance software, I guess, is what it ultimately comes down to. That's kind of where we sit. If you have any specific questions, I'm open to any of them, but that's basically where we're at right now and what we're looking at for probably the next three or six months.
Project timelines, project timelines and just overall something. You give us a lot of informal updates and different things of that nature. I like to kind of see as you're working on your projects, you know, you got a total number and then as you complete these things, I like to see where you're at on various, and you went across a lot of different, you went servers, desktops, you went infrastructure with cabling and different things of that nature. Some of them you can run simultaneous and some you can't. So, you know, as it relates to Windows Seven and the January fourteenth deadline for patches and updates which you're going to leave vulnerabilities, do we still have Windows Seven systems out there?
Nope, they're all gone.
Alright, so if we can just see where those check things can be just knocked off. And I mean, that's what I'm looking for. I'd like to see a little bit more detail, but I appreciate the.
Absolutely. Yeah, you know, we've talked about that a little bit on the side too. You know, I don't want to go into that amount of detail.
No, we just did a report. You did a report, you see where you're at, and that's basically, it's a pretty simple.
Yeah, we can definitely write that up.
So I got a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
This is got my pad. You need to set it up where I can use it.
Alright.
Is it new internet now? Did something change? It's not connecting.
We'll address some of those after.
I'll get this to you.
Maybe a one G we got up here.
It's outflow.
Mr. Griffith.
It's loading me.
Anything? Where the, stop, I almost said where the boats? Mr. Yole.
It's in there.
Hey, I just need to pass on a big thanks to the city and all the departments for the help that you gave us. Turn the flag, I do have a question. Commissioner Lawson, does anybody know if we have any black aviators that are in here somewhere? In the, you know, black history of the Black Army?
I fly, I'm flying out on Saturday.
No, no, no. Heroes, Tuskegee Airmen or something.
My dad didn't quite make it, he went to Tuskegee and just walked the boots and planned to take the course and his teacher cracked the frame.
Well, we've got to do something about that. We need an afterthought or something here. So we'll get to working on that, but some numbers, some numbers about the end. We figured we had about eight or nine thousand people out. Thank you for coming out. Be a part of that. And somewhere in the neighborhood, two hundred workers and volunteers that worked with this thing on. So a huge team effort. And forty-one businesses sponsor us and help us out with this thing every year. But I'd be remiss if I didn't stand up here and speak on behalf of the advisory board and say thank you very much for your support.
And you might as well tell them that you're going to need help because it's getting a lot bigger for you to have nobody yourself.
Too big for a small team.
We need to, we need to put it on our living room bench.
We have actually thought about having an after action report on this and decide best steps to get the right folks in to help us to do it next year because if it were to be in a three-day event, I don't think God would survive. I really don't. So I think we've learned what we can do. Now we want to keep it on this level, we have got to bring the people to help.
He's still haven't recovered yet, but.
And we had a significant event, Mr. Jeff Hathorne, our hero from last year, who's been instrumental in helping us make all these connections and get these airplanes. He has resigned his position on the board for ten years of service. So the complexion thing, hopefully it won't change that much, but that's something we've got to work around in the future. We knew it was coming, he and his wife are moving down south and we're missing.
Just make sure you give them the appropriate thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thor. Thanks to you more. Ms. Becker. Ms. Trickers. Mr. Holmes. Commissioner Bor.
Nothing.
Commissioner Bor.
Nothing.
Mr. McCaslin.
Nothing.
This is about to be broken. Vice Mayor.
I told him that.
No way.
Mr. Campbell.
Well, I must say, it's on behalf of the kids. The Mosley Elementary is having their inaugural after American reading on Thursday, February the twentieth. I'm extending an invitation to my fellow commissioners to join if you can. It's from eight to nine at Mosley Elementary.
What's the date again?
The, it's a reading, just coming to read to the class. Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday, February the twentieth.
Oh, I can, I can. I can make that.
I won't be quick. March sixth, mayor's reception, kickoff for the Azalea Festival. We look forward to everybody coming in, it's festival season. Mr. McLean kind of indicated that I was out parking cars and kind of doing traffic. But every day I showed up, they canceled the fishing tournament, so I figured I wouldn't show up the next day, so it was actually start. And so, but Bassmaster was, Bassmaster at least took great pride for it. We now have a little development here with four hundred anglers. We're seeing activity all around. Having an opportunity to spend the day with a group from Washington DC coming in here looking at investment opportunities. We've had groups from Texas, we've had groups from all over coming into Palaca again looking at the gym on St. John's River. So we're excited. We just left Tallahassee with legislative days and Florida League of Mayor's days. We all have board meetings and opportunities to go in to speak to folks who represent the state of Florida from all different quarters, from all four quarters of the state. And so we were really excited, but for our citizens, there's some very important issues that are before the legislature right now that really infringe upon home rule. And home rule basically is the, it's the opportunity that your municipal bodies have to make decisions for the people. Municipal government is closest to the people and the state is trying to take certain opportunities for your local government to deal with issues such as short-term rentals or to deal with impact fees or how we deal with affordable housing programs that are out there that allow us to be able to increase housing for our citizens or even how we fund certain governmental actions such as medical issues. And so all these things are close. There are things out there on a day-to-day basis that are going to affect you and it could lead to additional costs for you. So if you get an opportunity, make sure you call your representatives and let them know how you feel about issues and let them know that you have put them in place to make sure that they protect your rights at home. Because as homeowners, as local citizens, there are certain things that the state just shouldn't tell you to do. You've got, you know, inadmissible rights that should be protected at all times. And we want to make sure that we defend home rule, that we stand behind the people and that we make sure that Tallahassee is doing what's best for Palaca. And so those are the things that we do on a regular basis. We're in now in Tallahassee, will be in DC in May. We're all over trying to make sure that Palaca has the things necessary to move this community forward. And so we're really excited about where things are going right now. And so again, feel free to contact any of us. And we're available, we're open to listen and talk. And we may not always agree, but we're still on the same team and we're better together. And with that said, we're going to stand each other.